July 6, 2017, regular city council meeting of the Des Moines City Council to order. Now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Nutting is not here tonight. Do I have a motion to excuse?
So moved?
Second.
I think the motion, I know the motion was made by Councilmember Musser. I believe the second came in from Councilmember Banks. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Is there any correspondence?
Yes, Mayor. We received a letter from Deborah Grace regarding a number of issues of concern that she had in Windmont and Redondo Beach area.
Okay. And your office will respond to that?
They will.
All right. Great. Thank you. Okay. This takes us up to comments from the public. At this time, if you've signed up, I will call your name. Please come to the podium, state your name and the city in which you live, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Our first one is Mr. Bob Pond.
My name is Bob Pond. I live in Des Moines. A long time, twenty-seven years. I would like to endorse Matt Pin- 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 Pinya. I worked on that one. We need to continue leadership as our mayor. He's been great.
Wow.
I also will miss Dave Kaplan and Melissa Musser. They both did an excellent job. I want to endorse Matt Mahoney. He is an accessible, hard worker, and will be a great addition to the council.
Just as a point of order, we can't have any political endorsements or candidates during public comment.
All right. That's fine. That's on that. I'm here again to promote my idea to change the zoning on the east side of Thirty-Fifth from Kent Des Moines Road to Silverwood to be commercial. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this right. We are a city with no front yard. We must need a business frontage facing I-5, 509, and the light rail. This is a win-win, no-brainer. Kent will be building to the sky south of Kent Des Moines Road. Let's try to be leaders in a sustainable growth where this should have been always been. Thank you.
The next person that signed up to speak is Jonathan Smith. Did I get that right? No, it's, I, looking at, okay. Well, Smith isn't a trick name, but I wasn't sure. It looked like the T and the H kind of went together, so I wasn't sure. So I just wanted to make sure I didn't say your name wrong.
Well, I am a board member for Destination Des Moines. And for anybody who doesn't know who, what Destination Des Moines is, we're basically your community business outreach people. We put on most of the waterland events, like the fireworks that everybody, I think, saw. I came tonight just to basically, oh, I forgot to say Jonathan Smith, Des Moines, but sorry about that. I've been here five years. But we basically run on volunteers. We outreach with everybody in the community as far as the Rotary, the Legacy Foundation, the Parks and Recs, and the Des Moines Art Commission. And our events basically are donation-driven and business donations and such. One of the events that we do put on is Smoke on the Water coming up on the 12th. I just wanted to invite the council and anybody that's here. It's a fun event, and it's, it shows the, I guess, outreach between all the people because we're with Parks and Recs there. We got—
Their commission?
Farmers markets, Wednesday market. We got the Parks and Recs, as I said, and the Arts Commission's with the concerts in the park, and the Legacy Foundation has their auction that night. So it's going to be a fun night, and if anybody would like to, I don't know if I could mention that I do have tickets for sale here with me tonight, if anybody would like to purchase them there. So we have a big barbecue dinner by somebody who didn't do it last year that is, is a chef from Seattle who's not even doing it. And it's going to be a good menu. It's going to be fun with the music, silent auction for the Legacy Foundation, and a rededication of the picnic shelter. So I just wanted to bring that up, and I hope you probably see me a lot more because I was here to start with when I first moved into town, got the swing shift. I'm now back on day shift, so I can actually attend these meetings. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Quick question. You said you had tickets, but how much are they?
Fifteen for adults, twelve for seniors, and nine for kids.
Great. And I will be there. That's all we have that has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who did not get a chance to sign up that wishes to address the council? Seeing no one come forward, I will, that will bring us to board and committee reports and councilmember comments. We'll start with Deputy Mayor Pennington.
Hey, thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight. Had a Public Safety and Transportation meeting tonight, and the Chair, Councilmember Banks, will report on that. Was able to attend, at least for a little while, some of the fireworks over Des Moines, busy elsewhere in the county. But anyway, but it was a great event. It was really, really cool with, with all the setup for the kids down there, and I really, I think this, you hit it out of the park this year. So thank you to everybody, Destination Des Moines, and everybody that was involved with that. So thank you very much. Nothing else to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, please.
On June 26, there was Ad hoc Franchise Committee meeting where we discussed small cell communications and options regarding what may come forward in that regard. On June 27, attended with Mayor Pina, the Development Services Staff meeting, got an update on a number of different projects that are happening in town, plus the general workload that that department does, which is huge. And I made the comment at the meeting, I'll make the comment here, it's amazing how much they keep track of and that they do in terms of the number of projects, big and small, here in the city, and they do a fantastic job with it. On June 28, I attended the Soundside Alliance meeting with City Manager Mathias and had a discussion with them about the future of Soundside Alliance. One of the things that they're going to be committing to is three specific projects. First is expanded Business Development Services through the Small Business Development Center at Highland Community College, Highland College. Development Opportunity Mapping, which will essentially take the zoning in each of our jurisdictions and identify parcels for redevelopment so that someone can basically pull up the entire area that constitutes the Soundside Alliance, which is Gering, Taquilla, Des Moines, Normandy Park, Highland College, yeah. And, and basically so that if someone's looking for retail, they're able to pull up all the information regarding those, or there's some other project that, depending upon the zoning, that that would come through. What's that? And the Port of Seattle, yes. Sorry. The third item is basically to help market that once that that mapping has been done electronically. And then on, tonight is Deputy Mayor Pennington said, he had the Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting, we'll hear from Councilmember Banks, I want to thank Bob Pond for his kind comments. And I did want to ask a question, though, about the status. I know council referred it to committee, and I know we're awaiting an ordinance. When do we anticipate we'll probably see that?
So it's on the work plan, and we're just considering kind of what is the, what's the dynamic going to be exactly? What's the geographical location? What's the timeframe of bringing that forward? As you saw and appreciate your comments about that community development review process, but as you can see, that's, it's at least a full plate, if not two or three. So we're going to bring that forward in the most expedited manner that we can, but in relationship to other priorities.
And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Back.
Thank you. The SCORE Administrative Board of Directors last Wednesday did approve a rate increase for inmates, for what it's going to cost both cities and non-member cities that are part of SCORE. So beginning in 2018, the rate for housing the inmates is going to go up from 109 to 120. That's for the contract cities. And then the non-guaranteed rate for the non-member cities is going up from 163 to 175. And we approved that because of the cost of housing inmates and everything that's involved with that. I will point out that in 2018, King County is going to be charging approximately $194 a day. So once again, the SCORE jail has proven to be a very cost-effective investment for us. Our rates that we're paying per inmate is roughly 38% lower than what we would have been paying at King County. So just letting you know, there is going to be a rate increase. And then the last thing I wanted to thank, Deborah Grace, I read her letter as well from Redondo. And I've actually gotten a couple of calls, one from Redondo Shores, a Ms. Linda Fidler, and then another neighbor with similar comments. So, Michael, when you do prepare that response for Ms. Grace, I'd like to get a copy of that, either hard, hard letter or email, whatever it is, so I could just communicate to the other people that I've talked to, so.
Typically, we'll include the entire council on our response.
Great. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks.
We had a Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting this evening, and we had a number of items on the agenda. We, Director Brandon, where are you? Oh. Provided updates on the CIP project. And the focus primarily was on the 24th Avenue South Midway Elementary sidewalks and what's going on there related to the, sorry about that, related to the lanes and roadway improvements, storm improvements, et cetera. We've got information to provide for council, and then also the next steps for that project. There, we went over the completed projects, where South 216th Street, Segment 1A, Redondo Boardwalk, South 268th Street sidewalks, those are all completed as of 2016, 2017. And then current and active planned CIP projects, which are a number of them, so we can go over those as well. The projects not started yet are the 224th Street improvements, South 224th Street improvements, the downtown alley improvement, 16th Avenue South, Segment 5A, and then the Redondo paid parking are those that are anticipated for 2018. Anything you want to add to that project? Okay. We also went over nuisance properties, and in that one in particular, I felt Attorney Tim George did a really good job. Actually, everyone did a really good job on this committee tonight. The nuisance properties have gone from 18 to almost nothing, which is phenomenal. There, there's still that focus on 216th and 29th because the vegetation's growing again, and based on that, as well as other nuisance properties, there's a move to look at an emergency declaration that would allow us a faster approach to deal with these problem areas and cut down an 18-month process to almost a two-month process. And that's phenomenal. So we do have a memo here that I will definitely share. I'm sure we can get that for the council as well. Attorney Tim George also went over an ordinance that's going to be coming to council, and that is going to be on relating to removal and destruction of nuisance vegetation and debris, adding and codifying a new chapter to Title VII, DDTMMC, entitled "Overhanging, Obstructing, and Nuisance Vegetation." So we'll get more information on that at a future council meeting. We had Chief Delgado and Deputy Chief Bowles out of the Police Department Advisory Group. There was a request, and I have to say, this was really Bill Lynn Scott, and you were given kudos for that, on just some FAQs, frequently asked questions. Can we get a sheet of information that can be addressed to the communities for better communication? And together, the department came up with a really solid FAQ for any of us, actually, to be able to answer questions. There's a department vision, there's the mission, there's the values, how the organization is structured. There's also information on staffing levels, crime trends. I mean, I believe we have copies for everyone so that you can go over it. I think the most important thing is to know, this is still in draft, there's an opportunity for council to comment. So make sure that information gets back to the chief and deputy chief. This is going to go through another vetting process, I believe, with the whole team, and then eventually this will go on the website. And I think that's going to be really exciting because you can just quickly look at those headings and get the information that you need related to the issue you may have at that time. So I thought that was a really good overview. Also, I would say that the chief really felt that the relationship and collaboration that took place earlier this year and late last year with Legal, Public Works, and the Police Department on issues related to, whether it's North Hill, Pacific Ridge, nuisance properties where the code enforcement officers have to, you know, really respond quickly, has been working extremely well and is very successful. So I wanted to make sure that that got noted because it really has been working very, very well. A lot of other things came out of that, but I think those are the main points. Sorry, Brandon Carver, didn't say your last name. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Musser.
I don't have a formal report, but I do want to thank Bob Pond also. I want to thank you for keeping us honest for the almost eight years I've been on council. I know that there's been times you've come up to speak, and what you had to say wasn't necessarily the popular thing to say, but we always needed to hear it. So I thank you for always being so committed to your neighborhood and to our city, and thank you so much for all the hours you've dedicated to attending these meetings. So thank you. On July 12, I know we've been talking about all of the events going down, going on down at the beach park and kicking it off, is the dedication of the picnic shelter. And so thank you to staff and to Patrice and her team, bringing that online. It's exciting to see that finally come together. And what a great way to celebrate Patrice's birthday by bringing another beach park building online. So there we go. Welcome. And I want to say thank you to Tim George for, I think when I first came to council, the reason I came on was I wanted to start an abatement fund to address nuisance properties and together with our police team, our legal team, and with Tim George and me saying, let's just pretend like it's a big HOA. And I, and he's kind of doing that. And so thank you for being creative and thinking outside the box on how do we fast-track some of these properties, since I live next door to one of them. And I appreciate the efforts because it is a lot of time and sensitivity to some of the issues and how the homes got to the position that they're in. And I, I hear such great things from our citizens when a home like that or a property like that is finally addressed, the immediate impact it makes to the neighborhood. And so thank you to all of you for your efforts on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yeah, I have to agree. The way that the different departments have come together in this city to address crime and nuisances that we have had to deal with for a very long time is just outstanding. And I hear nothing but positive responses. I, there are folks that'll come up to me and say, I see the difference, I feel the difference. And so, you know, I, I am just overly impressed. And when we had those challenging conversations last fall, I didn't know where this was going to go. And I knew that some ideas had been tried, but the outcome was far more than I had hoped for, and, you know, also having a great plan isn't just enough, it's the execution of that plan. And we're seeing it done. So, Michael, Tim, Chief Delgado, Assistant Chief Bowles, and everybody else that's out there. I mean, you guys are working together, and it's really showing, and it's making a difference in this community, and I just thank you very much. We're at the beginning of summer here, and on, July 1st was the, was the day at the market. It was, you know, we'd been going for a little while with the market, but it was really well-attended. I had to take off a little early because I had the opportunity to do a State of the City at Wesley Holmes in their auditorium with the City Manager, Michael Mathias. Really engaged crowd. The, the presentation went on for about an hour and a half.
Probably two.
Two hours, yeah. They, they stayed in for the whole thing. I'm always impressed by our senior community because they, they care. They listen, they ask great questions, and they are our observers. So when things, you know, they're paying attention all the time. And they have asked that we consider either doing again or doing some kind of a follow-up because they'd like to put it on their internal channel. So that's been going well. And then on the 4th of July, we had our fireworks over to Des Moines, and the event went really well. There were a lot of people down there, and I have to say, I've had the opportunity to do the countdown at least three times, maybe four. And we'd always, you know, the first time I didn't get the crowd engaged, then we got the crowd engaged, and we always got down to zero. And that time we first got to zero, all that happened were the lights turned off on the marina floor. I think somebody was looking for the punk or a match or something like that. But this time, the crowd was engaged, the lights were down, we got all the way to zero, and immediately upon the crowd yelling zero, the first rocket went up. I was so pleased, it finally worked. So I loved it. But I do want to say thank you to Tony Hitler, Destination Des Moines, the countless number of community volunteers that are down there, because it's not just the folks that are part of Destination Des Moines. The Des Moines Marine Association was down there with, I'm going to look towards Bill, see if I can get a little help. This is the power, the power boating?
Yeah, Power Squadron.
The Des Moines Power Squadron? Poverty Bay Power Squadron. Boats were decorated, people were having a great time. They, they had live music. There was a whole series of family activities on the marina floor with climbing walls and bouncy houses and so forth. It was a pleasure to be able to walk around. There were a lot of people that were just smiling, saying thank you. I think, I, I have to believe the vendors did well and so forth. So this was probably the best put together, and it'll probably go down as the most successful. However, being successful with something like this also means that our law enforcement was really working overtime, and so were many of our staff. I know the marina staff was, and I just have to say, you know, it's a tough job, especially when it comes to law enforcement in a city that has a fireworks ban. And you have all these added guests, and you have to manage the traffic and everything else. So I just want to say, from the feedback I've received, outstanding work, and I really appreciate that. Before I go to my next comment, Councilmember Banks.
I wonder if there's, is there any way that we know how many calls came in from citizens related to illegal fireworks going off in their neighborhoods?
I believe, actually, we have that in a report.
Oh, there's the brief.
We have that in a report that's coming forward. So, anyway. The other thing that I wanted to make a note of is that there is a, there is construction somewhat going up on the intersection of 240th and Marineview Drive. As you turn off Marineview Drive to go to Highland College, there is a four-way stop being put in. The, the staff has done a great job putting signs up, letting everybody know, here it's coming, there will be a four-way stop. But that's a really difficult intersection in that the road has an S in it, and people can't see. We have, I, the chief will probably know off the top of his head, but we've had countless numbers of accidents there. And, you know, I, I think this traffic calming method is certainly going to help. So I'm glad to see that being done. And then we have a report from Mr. Bill Lynn Scott.
Bill Lynn Scott, Des Moines resident, and I wanted to just make a few comments from the Marina District, and it is the time of the season down there, obviously. A lot of things happening. First off, I'd like to also add my thanks for just a great 4th of July, but the whole neighborhood was a buzz, and Destination Des Moines is incredible, the officials, the city staff, but particularly the law enforcement guys and the marina staff. I don't know how the marina staff, you know, attended to, we had a huge number of boaters down there. It was jam-packed. We had both the Power Squadron and the Des Moines Yacht Club, and we had them there for five days. And so the staff kept up with that, they were finishing, you know, the lines for traffic and setting up barriers, and not had the Destination Des Moines folks all over the place. It was wonderful. It was incredible. We're very pleased, had a great time. Couple other items on the marina floor development. We talked, we had the consultant outbrief, and we had talked to the public earlier about having kind of a public engagement. And it's busy this time of year, but we're kind of looking for an update on that, and it's okay with us if, you know, you picked that up. I know there's a study session next week if you want to talk about kind of what the plan was, but I know folks are thinking, well, are we going to do that yet this summer? Will it move to the fall? That kind of thing. And so we'd appreciate, you know, a response. It doesn't have to be tonight. response. It doesn't have to be tonight, but.
Michael has a comment.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, no, appreciate your comment. Um, we, the next steps had involved, um, a council tour of development sites associated to some degree with the consultants, but also just generally to see Harbor Steps in Seattle, Pike Place Market Expansion, South Lake Union. We had that scheduled in June, but because of some conflicts, had now had to push it back into August, at which point we would like to have a large community input session, probably in September.
Oh, that, that'd be great then. That'd be great. And, you know, one, one thing we had talked, talked about, the, the people that have seen the briefing and that, we're hoping, uh, to see maybe some of the financial cases associated with the various options. And, you know, that, that piece was missing. So, you can't really tell, you know, is a residential more revenue-rich than a bunch of stores or?
I'm sorry. You're, you're, you're ahead of me here, Bill.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm sorry.
The next step, which I was going to announce during admin comments, but, you know, I won't totally preempt myself, is that the Port of Seattle is providing Phase Two of these grants and that's going to be all about financial feasibility for redevelopment. So, whatever you have next, I'm sure we're behind you, but.
Okay, on to the next one. Um, National Night Out is coming and I think it's the first part of August. And so, I was gonna encourage maybe that we communicate or use the CA, the Citizen Advisory Group to kind of help get that out into the neighborhood, if that makes sense. We, we did that with fireworks, uh, you know, kind of, um, the criteria around no fireworks going off. And I think that was helpful. And then today, I want to just say, first day of paid parking. Congratulations to the, to the marina staff. It's incredible. We saw everybody out there helping people through the gate today. My wife and I went down. We had lunch at Anthony's. I had them validate and I got out without a problem. It was wonderful. So, uh, we're forecasting great things. And, um, that's the report. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And that completes my report. So, I will turn it over to the city manager for the administration report.
Yeah, thanks. I'm not quite sure where to start after, Bill. Um, so, let me just start with paid parking. Today is the opening day of paid parking. Um, you know, I see Joe looking pretty fresh over there, ready to go. But, but he and, he and everyone involved have just, um, Scott Wilkins, Scott Romano, Public Works crews, um, the marina staff, IT, the police department, everybody is cooperating. And, um, so far, so good. We know it's a beta test. We know we're going to look at impacts and trying to address those as we go. We saw some today that kind of gave us an insight if there's something we need to do or not. But we appreciate your support a lot. And, you know, we're going to bring forth a budget amendment and pretty much put it on Bill for the number of suggestions he had. But you can see the, the four-way stops, especially at 223rd and 227th, I think were a great idea and I think have added to this. So, just wanted to acknowledge that. Councilmember Kaplan made reference to the Soundside Alliance, the policy committee. I just wanted to acknowledge the Port of Seattle is also involved and is stepping up to the plate in terms of trying to help Soundside. Um, you know, both finance and move forward on a, on an implementation level. We've always had great policy ideas and yet no staff to actually carry out the policies. So, the Port of Seattle is helping with that. But what I wanted to acknowledge was that, at the end of the meeting, Kathy Hugerty, who's a city council member from Tuck Willa and has chaired that committee for a long time, made reference to, um, the, the potential loss of two members of that committee based on their choice not to run for reelection. And one was, um, Port of Seattle Commissioner Tom Albro, who's been a great supporter of economic development and of the city, and our own council member, Dave Kaplan, who has contributed mightily to the, to the Soundside Alliance. And so, we just acknowledge, um, both of them. Okay. Um, then I would like to start with, um, a debrief from the 4th of July with the police department, Chief Delgado and Bob, to the degree he's involved. Um, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Can't lip read today. Members of council, Manager, uh, Michael Mathias, members of the community, Chief Delgado. Just want to talk a little bit about the 4th of July. Um, we received a few concerned, concerns, I won't call them complaints because, well, they are complaints, but they're, they're very valid. Uh, 4th of July is a very trying time for the public safety. And I look at Vic, because it's not just the police department. It's, it's all of us. It's anybody that's, uh, providing a service, a public safety service. But specifically for us and the PD, we did, we received, um, 39 9-11 calls, which is the same number as last year. What I have to say is, the average spike for 9-11 calls in South King County went up 112%. Every city in South King County, fireworks ban or not, had a significant spike. We remain the same and I have to credit the staff for all the public education, all the efforts that went out in warning our, our citizens in our community about the dangers and the, uh, the fact that it's illegal to, to do fireworks. Despite that, we had, uh, quite the collection of some very, very loud explosives. Um, very frustrating for us. Uh, when we talk about 39, uh, calls, fireworks-related calls, keep in mind, we averaged, that's, that's a good average, that's a high average of calls for service on a shift anyway. So, when you add in the significant increase in population during the fireworks over Des Moines, when you add in alcohol, when you add in a number of other factors that come in, because it's not just our good citizens that come in and watch these fireworks. It's other people's problems that come here, too. Uh, and with that comes challenges to response for calls for service. So, um, you know, the allocation of resources that we have are significantly challenged. Um, it brings people from outside the county. It does. And we welcome, we want people, we want to showcase our city. Um, but that being said, uh, the volume of traffic on the roadways creates bottlenecks that inhibit response to calls for service. And, um, when we have a significant number of officers on the marina floor, uh, Marina District, um, handling calls specific to the event, and then on the east side, you have officers responding to other calls for service. Makes it very challenging even to cover each other when we have calls for help. And as time goes on through the night, what you have is an increase in alcohol consumption. Uh, it is a holiday and I don't want to villainize people celebrating. It's a wonderful holiday. It's a wonderful opportunity for people to get together. Um, but we do have a significant number of people that abuse that privilege and create major strain for us. Uh, and those are the consumers of services for us. And those are the people that create the problems. So, uh, when you have the calls that we had, off the top of my head, domestic violence, combative DUI subject, uh, that require multiple officers and then processing. When you add in the time it takes to process, it creates a significant, significant, uh, resource strain for us. Um, bottom line is, and in talking to, uh, City Manager Michael Mathias, yesterday, one of the, the things that really spoke, uh, spoke out to both of us is we can't get to the things that concern our residents when we're dealing with these challenges. Um, so, we do our best and, uh, we're very fortunate that we survived another year. We want to look for ways of increasing our efficiency in the future, not just for the Des Moines Police Department, but for the South King Fire and Rescue. Uh, they're a major partner. We depend on them not only to help us with, with patients, but when our officers get hurt. Um, and they do get hurt. So, um, that being said, we will continue to work, uh, in partnership with our citizens, with other departments and, um, regional agencies to try and, uh, increase safety and look for better ways of policing our 4th of July. So, I open it up to questions if anybody has any. Sir?
Yeah, Chief, of all the 9-11 calls, was there any particular neighborhood in the city that seemed to have a lot more calls, uh, Pacific Ridge or?
Um, I will tell you, by complaint, uh, the common complaints we had early on were Pacific Ridge, areas in Pacific Ridge. Uh, that being said, uh, if you keep in mind, some of the areas that we were called to are areas that we have issues with crime anyway that, that are a little bit higher crime, uh, strain for us. So, uh, when you add in alcohol, you can't send one car. You can't send one unit there. You have to have a couple officer response. When we're dealing with multiple subjects where the fireworks have been going off, uh, people don't necessarily just stand around the fireworks and watch them go off. A lot of times with illegal fireworks, they'll set the mortars, the box of mortars up and they'll take off. So, if we find them, if we follow the cloud and get to them, often the subjects that are, uh, shooting these fireworks off will be away. So, we show up and we say, "Who did this?" They're like, "I don't know." And it's a very common answer. Uh, and then there's a confusion from some, uh, one family in particular who brought some fireworks to Grandma's house. Um, Grandma was completely unaware of the fireworks ban. Um, but this person had called to report the skyrockets going off. And he had a lighter and some fireworks in his hand. Completely unaware of, that the ban meant, meant his fireworks, too. He thought it was just meant illegal fireworks. So, once we had that explanation, very cooperative. But it, there's a wide range of fireworks issues. Many of them are, are higher risk. But to, to answer your question, uh, there wasn't one specific, it was pretty well-spread around the city. Some places got started a lot earlier than others.
Okay. And then last question. So, uh, you guys are so taxed on that day anyway, but when somebody does call 9-11, does dispatch let them know that the response may be quite a while before they see a patrol officer?
Yes, they do. They, they're pretty used to letting, uh, people know. And a lot of the callers will ask, I know, I know this isn't that big of an issue. We hear it from the dispatchers. Uh, we know the officers have other things to do. Or the officer just drove by, "Where's he going?" And dispatch will let them know, "Well, there's, he's on, or he or she are on their way to an in-progress call." So, there, there is that debate. A lot of the callers do know. It just gets frustrating when they keep going.
You're doing a good job, Chief. Thanks.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to make a couple of points. You know, it's always striking to me, um, when we talk about the 4th of July and the 5th, everybody had a great time except the cops. Okay? And that's, 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 that's a tragic outcome. And I, so just a couple of things, and this was sort of the conversation that the chief and I had yesterday. Um, I was taking my son back to Kent after the fireworks were over. I was in a line of what must have been 6,000 cars and probably five of them got off into the neighborhoods. And the rest were out of town. So, what we're doing is we're subsidizing in terms of the resources of our police department to maintain the opportunity for the fireworks at the cost of, and that was the chief's comment, the cost of what matters most to our residents. Okay? And I think that, in my view, that's a structural untenable outcome. And so, what we're going to recommend is for a, to hold a study session with city council, invite members of the, the fire district, police department, um, probably invite the chief of police of Kent, who's also just instituted a fireworks ban. Um, and, and city council, and Destination Des Moines, too, which we greatly appreciate, there was were wonderful fireworks. But if there's some way that we can find some resolution so we don't have ongoing competition between the fireworks display and the demands for safety that that requires, and the concerns that our residents have for illegal fireworks being shot off in the neighborhoods. And I don't know what the solution to that is, but we'd like to move forward and explore it. And I, and I totally appreciate the effort that, that PD is not only putting into the fireworks situation on the 4th, but they're stepping up to the plate relative to what's going on in the marina and how the marina paid parking will also serve the value of being an enforcement mechanism to prevent the kind of activity we don't want to see there, especially at night. Well, just a couple of comments.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, not quite as serious, but happily have Patrice talk about both our summer events update and also about, um, Dave Clark dedication. Thanks, Patrice.
You've got better eyes than I do. Oops. Alrighty. Well, summer is here and so are a lot of events in the community. You just heard about fireworks over Des Moines. And, uh, there's a lot more coming our way. So, um, want to give you an update on what's happening in Des Moines and especially through your Parks and Recreation Department and, um, a lot of other community groups as well. And this is, uh, National Park and Recreation Month. So, I just want to remind everybody of that. We're really proud of that. So, in our rec and roll brochure, we have, um, a To the Beach Summer in Des Moines page. It's like a poster that has all of the events that are going on in the Marina District and around the community in June, July, August, September, and actually goes through the, uh, October. But the majority of them are listed and it's on page two of your rec and roll brochure. City Currents is on one side of the summer brochure and, or magazine, and rec and rolls on the other. And if you just open up the front page, you will find the whole list of activities, who, what, when, where, why, with websites, et cetera. So, if anybody is wondering what's going on, this is the place to go. And if you don't have your rec and roll, you can go online to the city's website, desmoinewa.gov, and you can find it there as well through our rec and roll or City Currents program. We also have, uh, the Des Moines Beach Event Guide. Uh, there's a poster and there's also, uh, an event guide that is being distributed throughout all the tourism, uh, locations in South King County. And if you go to, uh, tothebeachwa.com, you can find out which, uh, what events on the waterfront are happening with not only Parks and Recreation, but the Farmer's Market, Legacy, uh, the Math Center, the, um, South South Side, and it goes on and on Rotary, the events that are happening this summer. So, there's a lot of places to find that information. And, uh, tothebeachwa.com has a link to all of the different organizations and venues where things are happening this summer. So, that's a great place to, um, go on, on your internet. I'd like to bring up some events that are happening, uh, this Wednesday evening, July 12th. It's the opening of our 2017 Beach Park Summer Concert Series sponsored by the, the Parks Department, Legacy Foundation, and of course, the Arts Commission. And so, want to make sure that everybody knows that's, those happen every Wednesday night, 7:00 to 8:30 at the Beach Park in the Meadow. Our first event is happening this Wednesday along with the opening of the picnic shelter and restroom. So, at 4:30, we'll have the opening of the picnic shelter. At 5 o'clock, there is a, uh, community barbecue sponsored by Destination Des Moines from 5 until 7. From 7 until 8:30, there's the concert. And from 5 until 8 is an auction. You don't have to have a ticket to join in the auction. And all the proceeds go to our low-income youth, um, activities and scholarships in Des Moines. So, we hope everyone will come out. And the events, many of them are free, but please bring your wallet. Donations are accepted. We have a couple of other great events going on. We have a free outdoor movie program in the park. Um, the first, the first movie we're going to have is going to be at Midway Park for National Night Out. And so, on August 1st, Midway Park, in collaboration with Reach Out Des Moines, is going to have a barbecue, movie, and other games and activities up at, up at, uh, Midway Park. And then the following Friday, uh, we'll have Moana down in the beach park and the, and then the August 11th thing. So, those are great family events. We have a lot of people come down there and just really have a good time. It's kind of like an outdoor movie. It's kind of like, you know, going to the, um, what were they, what were they, the drive-in, only without the car. So, I already mentioned National Night Out. And then we have another special event for our low-income kids in the community that I'm really proud of. We do a program in collaboration with the, um, Highline Middle School, or, I'm sorry, Highline Foundation, Highline Schools Foundation. And it's a free backpack for kids. So, people come to our Stephen J. Underwood Memorial Park, uh, between 10 and noon, they can get a backpack full of school supplies for their kids. And then our kids from Camp Chaos do all the entertainment. So, it's really, it's really a lot of fun. Um, another really important program that we have this summer and it's free to all of the kids in the community, it's called Picnic in the Park. There's free lunch. It's a lunch and snack program. We have it at multiple locations. And you can see the Midway Park, Fieldhouse, Parkside Elementary, Woodmont Library, Redondo Beach, Beach Park, Farmer's Market. And those are all sponsored by our, in collaboration with our Des Moines Food Bank. And those are all sponsored by our, in collaboration with our Des Moines Food Bank, they provide all the food, we provide some of the spaces. And we also, through Rotary Club, fund activities at Midway Park, Monday through Friday, noon to four, recreation activities that will go along with the lunch and the snack. So that's really important for our community to know. And of course, we always have Camp Chaos every week throughout the summer, and it's really important for our community to know that there are scholarships. We have scholarships available for low-income children to participate in all of our Park and Recreation programs. So we hope that folks that are in need will come and see us and register their child in one of our programs, especially Camp Chaos, it's a lot of fun. We also have maps to all of our parks, those who just want to go and wander around the town and get some exercise, or, or enjoy the nature, please come to one of our parks. The maps to our parks and trails are online, if you go to www.demoineaua.gov, you can look up maps, park maps, and you can find it. And we also have our Art on Poverty Bay Walking Map that's available. It's on our website as well. So if you look up the documents, you can find those and really enjoy some of those free activities in the community. And I'm just here to say, "Let's play, Des Moines." Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan.
One question, the Washington State Parks Department.
Yes, yes.
Now that there's actually a budget for the next biennium, they've had a cultural events in Saltwater State Park for a long time. Is that included in?
That's included on our list, and it's also included on To the Beach Wa. So if you go there, you can go to State Parks, you can go to the Farmer's Market, you can go to any of the local waterfront providing, agencies that provide recreational services, and find out what's going on. As a matter of fact, the cultural celebrations, there is a, there's three of them. There's a Southeast Asian Celebration, a Native American Flute Festival, and a Cambodian Celebration, and they're in July and August.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Dave Clark. He's a good friend to the city of Des Moines. He worked with us on 10 projects since 2005. He passed away last Tuesday, June 27th, after a short illness that affected his heart. It was unknown and expected, they didn't have a diagnosis for him until the day before he passed. On behalf of my peers here at the city, and I want to take a few minutes to celebrate all the work that Dave did to improve our community. Our first project with Dave was in 2005 at Stephen J. Underwood Memorial Park. I saw a restroom like this at Barney Wilson Park in Kent. I asked Kent who did it, they told me Dave Clark. I called him, and he offered us his design. And that was the kind of guy he was. From then, it was kind of a no-brainer to want to work with Dave. We put out an RFP for an architect. He submitted his references, and he did our, he did one of our first historic projects in Des Moines at the Grandstand. If you go look at that Grandstand, it's the only wooden Grandstand that remains in King County, or in the state. It's a beautiful facility, it holds up to 300 people, and he did a fabulous job on that. The interesting thing is that, I'll never forget that first meeting, where the contractor was there, and Dave pulls out the plans, and he says, "We're going to go through every page of these plans. If you have any questions, you let me know, because I am not going to accept any comments that you didn't know the project later, and there will be no change orders." And that was true Dave. I mean, he expected the finest out of everybody that he worked with, and he let them know right up front, and if it didn't go well, he made sure that they got back on track. The historic Beach Park Dining Hall decking and building restoration, Dave started working with us on the, on the decking project, and that was in 2011. That, we got grants for that, and so we started with that project. We had enough matching money to do that, and then later, we hired him again to come back to finish the building restoration. And as you know, it opened up about two years ago. We've won two awards for that building, and I've got to give a lot of credit to Dave and his team. We won a county award for excellence, and also we won the state SHPO Award, the head of the State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, gave us their highest award for that project. Dave did some other facility improvements. I think word of mouth got around. I think everybody that worked with Dave grew to love him and call him friend. He did some restrooms at the Field House, and I'll tell you, they were in pretty bad condition, but he did a good job with not many funds to do it. Here in Municipal Courts, I'm sorry, Municipal Court and the Council Chambers, Dave works with staff on this project. And he took on the historic Beach Park Auditorium renovation after we had a couple of contractors go afoul. We had some issues, we had a great designing architect that initiated the project, but as far as project management goes, they weren't able to keep the contractors on task. And enters Dave Clark, he took over the project, he cleaned up the mess, I hate to say it that way, but he finished that project, and it's an exquisite building that's well-used, well-loved. And that building also won a Historic Preservation Award. Dave, I had the pleasure of working with him on our Parks and Rec Master Plan. He worked with me and the Ad Hoc Committee, they had 23 members on that committee. We went through all of the projects, they prioritized, he prioritized the projects with his staff and our, and our committee, talked about what they needed, you know, what each of the parks needed, put together the cost estimates for us, and I've got to say that his cost estimates, cost estimates are correct. Finally, sadly, this is the final project that Dave will be working with us on. When the Beach Park Picnic Shelter and Restroom were damaged by a fallen tree a couple years ago, he came in and did some of the repair work, and then came back and just finished the picnic shelter and restroom project in, in May. So I just want to mention again, this, we're going to dedicate that picnic shelter in our restroom on next Wednesday, July 12th. I hope everybody comes out. We know that some of our Covenant Beach campers are going to join us there, as well as a lot of our citizens that want to come to this town and have fun with us. The dedication's at 4:30, it's going to be followed by a community barbecue, the bids for kids auction, summer concert, and I just want to say, closing, that David Clark made Des Moines a better place. And his slogan was, you know, "Better place to live, learn, and laugh." That's what, that's what he was about. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Patrice. The last item I have is just a reminder that we are still accepting applications for our Aviation Advisory Committee. We've received several really great applications. We're going to keep that open until the end of July, so we encourage anyone with interest to participate. You can find the application forms online, and that concludes the managerial.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, amendments to Title Four, DMMC, amending the title Mayor Pro Tem to Deputy Mayor. Item four, Redondo Boardwalk Repair Consultant Agreement Supplement Number Six, for additional construction administration and inspection services, and Supplement Number Seven, for contract mediation support. And item five, amendment to contract with American Building Services Incorporated, for janitorial services in city buildings, Des Moines Beach Park Restrooms. And that concludes the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Musser. Is there an item that any council member wishes to pull? Okay, seeing those, seeing none, any discussion? Councilmember Musser.
I just want to thank staff, I won't, I won't pull it, but for always our janitorial contract, and for anybody who's looking over the consent agenda, staff has done a great job of making sure that this is the best value for the services that they provide to our city, and so, thank you for always staying on them for that.
Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? No? Passes 6-0. Thank you. Okay. At this time, the council's going to take a five-minute break. I have a prior arrangement, and I need to leave, so I'll be passing the gavel to Deputy Mayor Pennington to finish tonight's meeting. passing the gavel to Deputy Mayor Pennington to finish tonight's meeting.
All right, we're back from our break. And boy, the mayor doesn't know what he's doing because we're going to have some fun. And we're going to kick it off with Chief of Operations Dan Brewer. He'll give us a presentation on the budget amendment for the Marina and Beach Paid Parking Project.
All right, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council, Dan Brewer, Chief Operations Officer for the city. Just before I get started, a couple of housekeeping items. You should have some information in front of you, an updated agenda cover with the blanks filled in, in the motions. And you'll have an updated CIP worksheet that looks like this. And a REIT utilization on the back of that that I'm going to be referring to in my presentation. So as Michael mentioned, as we've heard, today was the opening or the start of the paid parking system down at the Marina. So that's up and running. So today is kind of the start, if you will, of our beta test. We had agreed that we'd do a 45-day kind of check-in and monitor how things are going. And certainly, if there's issues before that, we'll address them and come back to council. But at 45 days, we'll kind of report back with how things are operating. We have noticed a few things that we could tweak and make some adjustments already, and so we're working on some of that. Staff's been out all day today. In fact, Scott Wilkins is out there right now, along with some of the other Marina staff, just kind of helping people work through some of the systems. And so that's been really helpful. And we'll kind of continue to do that through the weekend as well. So just kind of as a reminder, you know, why paid parking at the Marina? And it's really about three things. First, preserving and enhancing our infrastructure. You know, here's some pictures of our north bulkhead. And there's a beam completely missing here that you don't see. And of the beams that are there, kind of holding up our piles, there's not much left of them. So the revenue generated from this is intended to help pay for capital reinvestments in the waterfront zone and our bulkheads in particular. Secondly, is to provide enhanced law enforcement by regulating access, particularly at night, both on the Marina floor and in the beach park. And then thirdly, to kind of, you know, is to assure that the north lot is available for emergency management operations if we ever were to need that. So just want to talk about the scope of work that when we set out to do this work, we really were trying to accomplish two things, two different capital projects. The first one was to install a paid parking system in the Marina and the beach park. That project is funded out of the waterfront zone CIP. It's not funded out of the Marina Capital Project Fund. The second thing we wanted to do is get fiber optic communications from our servers here at City Hall to the Harbor Masters office down in the Marina. You know, that project was funded out of the Marina CIP. And it's important to understand the distinction of those. I'm going to refer back to those later on in the presentation. So here's, as we kind of work through the budget amendment proposal that's before you, here's what actually happened. So we got, the paid parking system is installed. That's up and running now. We got the fiber optic communications from here down to the Marina. But there's been some scope changes throughout the process I want to talk about. And the first one has to do with installation of power and communications from the Marina into the beach park. And so when we originally set out to, with this project, we thought that we'd be able to get power to the pay station back by the picnic shelter and restroom from our service at the beach park. But as we got into the project further, it was discovered we didn't have any capacity to do that. So it necessitated bringing power from the Marina floor into that area. So we trench, you know, we trench along the meadow, along the side of the meadow, put our conduits in there. And the trenching work and excavation, that's a big part of the cost to do that. So while our trench was open, we laid conduit and ran fiber communications back to that area as well. And that, for that marginal cost of some conduit and fiber, we're going to capture some really big benefits. And I've listed them here. You know, it allows us some enhanced payment options at that pay station that's back there. It allows us to access the gate to the beach with controlled access with a fob, so we'll know precisely who's coming and going out of that gate, which we've never been able to know that information. And so that's really going to be helpful for us. It will enhance capabilities of our event rental facilities, dealing with wireless access and things like that. And it will create opportunities for enhanced security in the beach park. We've continued to have vandalism issues down there. And so we're exploring opportunities to have cameras down there that literally, you know, at the speed of light, can be viewed at the police station. So if, for example, one of the clerks at night sees a bunch of people down there, we can, we could see that and dispatch officers down there with cameras and then have some recording of vandalism that's occurring. We've had windows broken out, graffiti, all kinds of stuff going on. So there's options for us now that we have fiber into that area that we'll capitalize on. The second big change in scope was to address concerns related to parking at the entrance of the beach park. Throughout the process this spring, we'd heard from a number of people, and we've had discussions with the council about trying to figure out something to be done about moving those parking spots further to the west to get them out of the travel lane. So there was, it was really narrow in there. And so this is some picture that was taken during construction. So we widened some asphalt out here and kind of moved these parking spaces away from the travel lane. So there was some costs associated with that. Couple of other things I want to talk about that's led to some of the extra project costs. We've talked about the first two bullet items already. Earlier this year, you know, we had a really wet, rainy spring, late winter, which kind of delayed the startup of this project. And as a result, it really put us at odds with getting decent bids for asphalt work and some of the concrete work. In fact, sometimes we couldn't even get bids. We couldn't get people that were available or interested in this small of a project to give us bids. So those are a couple of things that really impacted our schedule. The other thing in responding to other citizen concerns and that were raised throughout the process, we've modified the pedestrian access from the Marina into the beach park as an interim measure. Before, you know, people were having to walk on the road into the beach park to kind of get into the park. And so now that we have a gated access there, we really wanted to kind of make some improvements there. And so I'll show you a picture of that here shortly. We also looked at added traffic control, signing, and pavement markings, both on the Marina floor and on Sixth Avenue at some of the intersections that were mentioned to kind of enhance traffic pedestrian safety and operations. And then at Anthony's, we did work with them and installed an additional validation station there. So a few things that kind of added to some other project costs. Here's a picture of the work that Joe and his team did on the pedestrian access. So now people can walk right across these pavers from the Marina and go right onto the walkway behind the parking and access the beach park and the promontory area without having to be on the road. And this is kind of a picture of the entrance where you can see the paid parking in the background, improvements that were made there. Here's the always stop at Sixth and 223rd. So what's changed? So the original budget that we had from, actually, it started in 2016, was a $400,000 budget. Our estimated cost to complete at this point is $610,000. We are very close to being complete, so we're very confident with this number at this point. You know, ideally, you know, we don't like to bring budget amendments forward to council in this fashion. We like to come before expenditures have exceeded our budget. In this case, due to a number of factors, we weren't able to do that. And so right now, we're certainly over that $400,000 number. The good news is, I guess the good news, bad news, we'll talk about here, the additional $210,000 would come from REIT II, real estate excise tax. There are funds available for that. And you can see this, the updated number is on the REIT utilization page under the 2017 column, about halfway down. It'll say $485,000 in REIT II. It's kind of the, the bad news is that it has to be from REIT II versus other sources. The other side of the story is there's offsetting savings in other funds, and I want to talk about that. The first is in the Marina CIP. So remember, when I began the presentation, I talked about the waterfront zone CIP versus the Marina CIP. The Marina Capital Fund is an enterprise fund. And the fiber communications from City Hall to the Marina had a budget, original budget of $150,000. That project was completed for $47,000. Net cost savings was due to, you know, we were able to attach our fiber run to PSC poles and utilize existing raceway conduit on the Marina floor. So we were able to see about $103,000 in savings on that project. But that's in the Marina Capital Fund, not the MCI Fund, which is where the parking project is located. The other offsetting savings is in a couple of different operating funds. So one of the things that we did, because of the bidding issues and climate, we weren't able to get bids, we did a lot of this work with Marina staff and our public works crews. And so we tracked those expenses because it's a capital project and those costs were allocated to this project. And you can see the totals there, about $100,000, just shy of $130,000 in labor costs. Those labor costs are all already budgeted for in various operating funds. So what you'll see is some corresponding savings in Marina Operations Fund of $78,000 or almost $79,000. And in the Street Fund, about $28,000. So about $106,000, $107,000 in offsetting operational costs in operations funds from the Marina and Street Fund. Those are both enterprise funds, so you can't really take that savings and move it over because of the revenues in those funds are restricted for a specific purpose. So all together with this $106,000 in savings and the $103,000 in the capital, kind of makes up the $210,000. So it just is in different funds. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Move to approve an additional $210,000 for the Marina and Beach Park Paid Parking Project, bringing the total budget to the project to $610,000.
Second.
Okay, the motion was by Councilmember Kaplan and seconded by Councilmember Bangs. Is there any discussion?
So the $210,000 would reduce the ending balance from $294,000 to $80-some-odd thousand, is that correct?
No. It reduces it to $294,000. The $485,000 that's shown for this project is what's needed total for REIT II. There's other, there's some other funding.
So the $485,000 is a component of the $610,000?
Yes.
Okay. That answered that question, so actually I feel a lot better about it. Thank you. The second thing is, by staff having done the work on this thing, they have saved money on the capital side, on the operating side, the Marina fund in excess of $180,000. And there's a fund that needs it. That's one of the ones that needs it, as we know, with the upcoming capital improvements that we have. So I strongly support going forward with the improvements that have been made.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Back.
Even though I have not been a big proponent of the paid parking idea, the enhanced and extended fiber optic is huge, and the surveillance camera capability is a big plus. So I think this is very well worth what we're doing, just for the added security and safety. And surveillance cameras is kind of the best way of security for that whole area down there. So I'm really glad that's going to be in the beach park itself.
All right. Councilmember Musser.
Yeah, and I want to thank staff. I know when we first started discussing paid parking in the Marina back in 2011, it was going to be, you know, the honor system, and we'd put up a station, and we'd hope people would pay. And then with people like Bill Lynn Scott's help and other, you know, condo tenants down around the Marina, and then the increased, you know, vandalism, losing the stained glass windows at the auditorium, and handful of other things that was sent back to committee with the directive that we need to, if we're going to do this, we need to do it correctly and in a way that it does improve the safety responses, or, you know, the safety of the Marina. And so I'm looking forward to seeing not only just the, you know, the revenue that it brings in, but the savings in other areas, when we're not having to paint vandalism, when we're not repairing windows, when we're not having, you know, citizens concerned that kids are, you know, going up the trail at weird hours of the night, or they're breaking off tree branches, or we have people sleeping in the Marina overnight. I think that, I think in the long run, this will be a quality of life enhancement as well as a revenue generator. So thank you to staff for the hours put into making sure it was done right.
Just briefly, driving around down there, the professionalism in terms of how that work was done, you could actually contract yourselves out. And not that we want you to, but you did an excellent job down there.
Joe and Scott deserve all the credit.
Yeah, absolutely. Good job.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Kaplan.
Move to direct the administration bring forward a 2017 capital budget amendment to cover the additional expenditures for the Marina and Beach Park Paid Parking Project.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Bangs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. So we're going to go into executive session. And at this time, we'll go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of litigation under RCW 42.30.110 and property accusation per RCW 42.30.1101B. The executive session is expected to last approximately 20 minutes. You're all more than welcome to stay. We're not going to have any business after the executive session, so if you want to stick around, great. If not, have a good night.